Hello, everybody. Welcome. You know, it's just gonna take one brave person to turn their camera on and then everyone else is gonna be like, I can turn my camera on. So you're welcome to join with your camera off. That's totally acceptable. But we also welcome you to participate in the discussion if you want. Turn your camera on so we can see your beautiful faces. I'm just gonna let people in before we get started. And if you want to find the chat box and say where you're coming from or where you're located. And then what you do. So if you're a PTA, COTA, or SLP. We can just get introduced. I'm gonna take that squeaky toy away. Colorado, Chicago, Boston. Janice, you're the brave one. You're gonna be inspiring everybody tonight. Hi, Kami Boise. Iowa City. Awesome. Okay. Well, welcome to the first case study session, the first live case study session. The purpose of these sessions is to have interesting, deep conversations about patient-centered care within the context of interdisciplinary collaboration. So every time we have one of these case study sessions, it's gonna be a conversation with all of you. And then we're gonna have at least two different disciplines represented with the hosts. So my name is Megan Berg. I'm an SLP. And then we also have Nathan Kuzza here with us tonight, who's a PTA. And I will introduce him in a minute. But first, I just wanna go over some logistics for tonight. So just so everybody knows, and you can see it on the top corner of your screen, that this is being recorded and it will be made available publicly. So with that said, absolutely welcome participation. Absolutely welcome you to turn your camera on, just so you know it will be recorded and shared. So if at any point you have a question or you want to contribute a comment to what we're talking about, I think the best way to do it is to raise your hand. And there should be a raise hand icon. If there's not, you can use the chat box and I can make sure that you get woven into the conversation that way. But we have about an hour scheduled for this, which I know is gonna go super fast. So we'll just pack in whatever conversation we can in that hour. And like I said in the email, this is a safe space. So we're here to enforce that. So no bullying, discrimination, or aggression. Any of that behavior will be removed. So again, my name is Megan Berg. I'm an SLP. I'm the founder of Therapy Insights. And for those of you who don't know, Therapy Insights is a company that serves SLPs, OTs, COTAs, PTs, and PTAs. We have a whole massive library of patient education handouts and therapy materials, clinical tools, article summaries, and continuing education courses, all designed to help you save time. So you can focus on the time that you have with your patients. So if you are a part of our Therapy Insights community, either through the Access Pass or Therapy Fix, welcome. I'm super glad you're here. And if you are not yet a part of our community, you can check us out at therapyinsights.com. So Nathan is here tonight to have this conversation with us. And like I said, Nathan is a PTA. So thank you for being here. And can you just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm a PTA here in Missoula, Montana. I currently work in a skilled nursing facility. Mainly I've worked there for the past seven years that I'm a PTA and worked one year in an inpatient rehab clinic in a hospital. And I guess as a PTA, my background is mainly in exercise-based. So I got a bachelor's degree in exercise and movement science from the University of Oregon. And I have a certified strength and conditioning specialist. So that's been my primary intro to physical therapy. And then I do have a background of a lot of working with kids and working with kids with developmental disabilities prior to becoming a PTA.
Awesome. And I know Nathan because we used to work in the same facility together. And so when I decided to move forward with these case study sessions, Nathan's name came to the top of my mind because he really embodies, I think, what it means to be a clinician who puts patients at the center of everything and really providing patient-centered care and focusing on that human element. So glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do is read this case study out loud. So people who are watching the recorded version know what we're talking about. And then we'll dive into the discussion. And the first thing that I wanna talk about is just to like started out on a light note is to start talking about the word complacency. And so as I'm reading this, just be thinking about that word and how you might see this word play out in this case study, which is completely fictional, but I'm sure that you will recognize some of the universal elements of this story. So Brian is a 38-year-old male who survived a traumatic car accident resulting in damage to the right frontal lobe and a broken leg. He has spent the last three weeks in rehab therapy, working on left neglect insight, impulsivity, safety awareness, and mobility. He is emotionally ready to go home and return to work, but physically and cognitively, there are concerns that this is not a good option right now. He's married with two children and works as a programmer. Due to the nature of his injury, he does not exhibit the ability to have accurate insight into his limitations and prognosis. His short-term memory is impaired and there is concern of safety limitations in a home environment when he is alone or sole caregiver of the kids. The therapy team believes that he would benefit from an additional nine weeks of therapy before going home. So I bring up the word complacency first, because in this particular case study, there's this difference between what the therapy team thinks is the best idea and what the patient wants for the direction of their life. And so I think often what ends up happening is this gets documented as maybe not being compliant with a plan of care. So does anybody have any thoughts about that word? Do you see that word come up a lot in the charts that you're reviewing? Is it a word that you use or have used? Does anybody have any thoughts you wanna share?
I see it a lot. I need to hear it a lot. I mean, especially when someone first comes into a skilled nursing facility, you hear people. You know, they're just out of the hospital and people are, oh, they're not compliant. They're not doing this. They're not doing that. But really, they're in a pretty acute state, acute state. And they need some time to level out before you can even start to do any therapy. And it's hard to say someone's not compliant if they don't, especially with a traumatic brain injury. You don't know what they're receiving cognitively or, you know, what they're processing or, you know, how they're even perceiving the world around them. So it's, you know, I think you have to get to know what their perception is first before you can really guide them to what they need. So.
Yeah, go ahead, Janice.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. Most of my work is in dementing diseases, geriatric rehab. And I see this word a whole lot with my folks with a whole host of dementia diagnoses. And I find more often than not, unfortunately, non-compliance is a result of the approach of the care provider versus a resistance to try and do whatever it is that the therapist or the nurse or the CNA wants them to do. And I think it's a very easy word that we use as a crutch in rehab is we have very limited time and often limited resources. So you go in and you try something. And if it doesn't work on that first try, they're non-compliant, right? And so I've tried not using that word a lot lately, especially for the past year, to be honest. I'm just giving a lot more people passes because of the emotional weight of everything and just trying to use words like awareness, reduced awareness, or might need more strategies. So yeah, compliance is some, I just feel like it has a really negative connotation as well, like there's an ill intent or something. And there might be occasionally, but very rare do I actually see somebody, when you approach them with empathy, patience, kindness, that they're really truly non-compliant. And again, that's always their choice. We can make all the recommendations in the world as clinicians. But at the end of the day, if I tell someone they should be on a particular diet for safety and they wanna drink water out of their bathroom sink, it's their choice, right? So I agree with you. All that to say, I agree with you.
Yeah. Yes.
I think what also is important is the obedience factor. And yes, I agree with that whole reality shift might not be the same with how we perceive things. But also there's that fine line of self-advocacy too. I think we need to be really sensitive that when someone is not compliant or not wanting to do something, there's something that is preventing them from doing so. And so I think as a clinician, it's really important to key in a body language and maybe an antecedent and things like that to kind of see what is possibly trickling down into that non-compliance. Maybe if there was an experience with it that was very negative or it's not clear or something. So there's something really going on, I think, that has to be really looked at carefully, because if you make attempts on this, sometimes you can really, you know, do something to the relationship between you and the patient or the family members, you know, if they're saying that their loved ones are struggling. And I think, you know, if we translate this to other non-compliance areas, like when we get into autism or things like that, we have to find ways to give that person self-advocacy and have that dialogue somehow happen in one way or another. Of course, it can be nonverbal, but I think that's another aspect of compliance that I found very important.
For sure. And I I, let's see here. Abby, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I was gonna say too, a lot of times I work in acute neurological rehab. And so I'm seeing patients after their inpatient stay in acute care more in a day rehab setting. And so sometimes you'll see repeat offenders who maybe are non-compliant with their blood pressure medications and then have repeat strokes and such. So I think then it begs the question of, you know, what type of systemic issues are there, you know, like access to medication and such? And if we slap that word, non-compliant, it makes it seem as if they're not trying and not really considering what other difficulties they might be having that aren't really their fault at all.
Yeah, for sure. And I always like, cuz I've thought about this word a lot cuz I used to use it cuz it's like everywhere in all of the documentation. So it's like, oh, this is like a word we use, I guess. And then I started thinking about it and I majored in history before I became an SLP. So I'm always like fascinated by how did we get here? And like, what were the stories that kind of brought this human collective to the place that we are now? And like, when you look at the medical system itself, like historically, it's been extremely authoritative. And I think maybe part of that is like because of the level of education that was required to be in the medical field and just how unattainable that was for a lot of people. And then you look at like the way that the different systems have interacted and like, there's just so many stories. Like you can look at Henrietta Lacks, who was a black woman who went in for abdominal pain, was diagnosed with cervical cancer. Her cells were taken out of her body without necessarily her permission to be shared with researchers. And now like her cell line is the top-used medical research cell line in history. And she was never even informed of that. She was never compensated for that. Her family was never compensated for that. There's so many different studies that the government has funded. Like you can look at the Tuskegee syphilis study that targeted black men. And they were trying to figure out like what happens to people who go untreated when they have syphilis. And so it was a controlled study. But the people who were involved were never really given any information about what was going on, never really given any choice. When penicillin came out, they weren't even told about the option of penicillin, which could have cured them instantly. So there's just like so many historical elements to this word complacency and this authoritative medical model. And so that's kind of had me kind of questioning the whole medical model that we are using. So I wanna talk to about what the medical model that I think is super prevalent right now. And I'm just gonna share my screen with you real quick. So I, this is the medical model that I feel like I was trained in and that is kind of permeates our medical field right now. And that's the traditional medical model where the central focus is really the diagnosis. And then the treatment goal is to eliminate or reduce the severity of the diagnostic condition. So we have all of these goals that are specifically targeted for eliminating or reducing signs and symptoms. And then we're measuring success by have those signs and symptoms of the diagnosis decreased. So all of our tests are really designed to measure, you know, very black and white numbers. And then like this model fits very neatly into the insurance companies and what they're looking for. Because you can kind of put a number to everything. So I'm gonna exit out of here. Um, so does anybody have any thoughts about the traditional medical model? Yes, go for it.
I do. And I think it leaves that function and what that impact is on daily living. And I know that we even put it into our goals, activities of daily living, right? But ultimately, it does come down to, well, it really impacts your life if you're one and a half mean below standard deviation versus like, is it really, how much is it impacting your life if it's not a number? And for me, that's always the thing, like, I know that they're hired, but they can't like, you know, follow a recipe to make a meal or something because of sequencing or whatever it is that's going on. So for me, it's function that's missing from that model.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's hard because it's always, I mean, I don't know, I always think it comes back to you need a number, like everything has to be put into a number. And you have to make your case.
Yeah, it seems like they're trying to standardize everyone. Where, you know, there's a standard test that we run in physical therapy and where I work is SPPB. It's like a short performance battery. And it's mainly, you have to be able to walk to do it. And there's a lot of cases where someone can walk, but cognitively, they can't function. But an insurance company looks at that and says, well, they're walking, they're fine, but they can't recognize their door that they were in five minutes ago. And, you know, it doesn't work functionally for people. And then there's other people who, you know, they could be a pretty high-level have a high-level spinal cord injury and with the right supports can live on their own. You know, there's a lot of community supports out there that there's a lot of equipment and a lot of adaptations that don't get added into these models. So it's not really a functional look at a human being. It's a way to quantify everyone.
Yeah, so, oh, go ahead.
No, sorry. This is such a, it's a big topic. I could say a million things about it, but I also think it's really important and it's not broached very often. So bravo for bringing that one up. I'll just say this, I think I agree with you that the traditional medical model, which is very much authoritative, came into my mind right before you said it. And it's very prescriptive. And I think not only does it work very well for the insurance industry, but it works very well in allopathic medicine from a pharmaceutical perspective. It's not to raise a debate about Big Pharma versus not, blah, blah, blah. But we do live in a medical world now where largely what we do to cure people is to prescribe a drug based on the diagnosis that we give them. Right? So I have a physician I work with who says, yeah, we like to name it and blame it. And then we give it a drug, right? That's just kind of, we blame it on the disease. And then inherently, by being fixated on identifying the name for everything is this idea that what got somebody to that diagnosis and what's going to get them out of that diagnosis is exactly the same. Right, CVA, here's your treatment protocol. You know, you know, below the knee amputation, here's the treatment protocol, low back pain, here's the treatment protocol. I mean, Alzheimer's disease, same thing, so complex. So what we're learning is blows my mind sometimes that we still have such dated approaches to managing Alzheimer's disease. So I think that's also really important to discuss here is that with this focus on a very out of, out of the actual human person. I don't know how we're really able to heal that person appropriately and give them the time and space and unique approach that they need. And hence this non-compliance, well, you don't fit this recipe, right? This is the protocol we're given. And if you don't fit that protocol, you're non-compliant. So I see that a lot.
Yeah, I'll reiterate. I see the, you know, giving a prescription, that's starting in therapy, you know, we have we're given you know, a day-by-day schedule of what we should be doing with each patient. I, to be honest, I've never really looked at that cuz it doesn't, it doesn't help. And you know, you can, you can play the game that you need to play to be able to provide the person the care they need, you know, if you need, if you need to do a certain test for insurance to cover it, do that test so you can continue to treat the patient. Because if you don't, they don't get the treatment. But I don't, I definitely don't buy into this standard box, you know, like this person is a type A. So we're gonna do this five days a week, every other week, they work on walking at this gate speed. It doesn't work cuz that's not what the person needs. And you need to get to know the person first. And, and then see where they're at and where they've been and then where they wanna be before you can even know what to work on.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make it short. And where else I see this trickle into is medical management software. And I've worked at facilities where it's just a dropdown for the goal and it's drop that. And if you really wanna like add anything that's personal to the patient, it's so much of your time that you then become less productive and obviously they want productivity up. And so you end up making these really like sort of decisions on what, which fits the patient better. And I think that stems right into this thing of this is what this is, then what these are the only options you can have for goals and, and progress.
Absolutely. Yeah, Abby.
I think the tough part of that model, kind of like what Nathan was saying, is that it just doesn't take the perspective of the patient, right? It has this inherent idea of curing the patient, which is kind of the difficulty of rehab cuz we have those benchmarks, right? Like in PT, you should be able to walk this far, this fast in speech. You should be able to do this test. And if you're not, you're below average. And so that's kind of the hard part about rehab. But then that's our job to then figure out what the patient wants. So like this patient is saying they wanna go to work. They wanna do all these things where right now it might not be the best choice. Like, how can we get you there, right?
Yeah, and going back to this case study story of Brian, how, how much progress is really gonna be made if it's a black and white, like you need to be able to do this before you can have the freedom and independence to make your own choice? Because if the buy-in isn't there, I don't know, I've never really seen progress be made in that context.
I'll also add like a thing I've learned probably in the past year. And I like the term is individuals have the right to fail too. You know, it's not just about success, like it's, it's their own lives and they have the right to fail if that's what they choose to do, you know, that it's not our job to fix everyone. And you know, I kind of see it though. And I wasn't here the whole time I was a PTA. I mean, when I first started, I wanted to fix everyone and like do every, all the best. But now I'd see it's like, I basically provide a service they can buy or not buy. So I can, I can offer them what I have, have to give. And if they wanna buy it, they can, you know, it's the same as going to a grocery store or something. Just like, I'm not, I don't know their lives better than they do. So there's no reason that I should tell them what to do or tell them they're wrong to think the way they do. I can just tell them my perspective and what I think. And then if we don't agree, I honestly say like if Brian says I, he doesn't agree and I just tell him, well, I hope, I hope you prove me wrong, but I don't think that's what's gonna happen. I don't think you'll be successful right now. And I think that's a, if you're willing to like accept their point of view as legitimate, then they'll, they'll trust you. You can have harder conversations and they'll trust what you think more than if you're just always telling them what they're doing is wrong and what they think is wrong. And they're just, in a lot of cases, if they're like me, they'll just fight you. You know, I wouldn't go along with that at all, someone telling me how bad I'm doing. And
Right, yeah. And I think that trust, like trust is such the key word. Because like when people come into these healthcare settings, so much is taken away from them. Like they don't get to decide if they're in like inpatient or acute care, like they don't get to decide when to go to bed, what they're gonna eat. They feel like every single decision is being absolutely taken away from them because it's being kind of put into this constellation of like, okay, what's insurance gonna cover? What are the goals? Like, what is the, what can the system hold? What can the system accommodate for this person? Rather than like, how can the system serve this person in their, in all of their human capacity? And when I think about a case study like Brian, I think about like, yes, maybe it's not a good idea for him to go home, but there's always this, and I can't quite remember how you said anything, but I liked it. And another way to say it is the dignity of risk. And that was a phrase that I got from Chris Klasby, who was a social worker here in Missoula and was in a car accident and lived most of his life in a wheelchair and went through rehab at Craig Hospital. And he talks about this dignity of risk and how in the healthcare setting, like we can be so obsessed with safety and so obsessed with like meeting these goals and getting people kind of into that bucket of like, you're healed or you're safe enough. And then like we completely miss out on the fact that they have their own human dignity and they're willing to maybe take some risks for their safety in exchange for that dignity.
I think it's always interesting, like if we're thinking of able-bodied people, right? How many times do you go to your PCP and they recommend that you do this and this and this? And how many times do you actually do it, right? Whether that's adding vitamin D, doing 30 minutes of exercise every single day? But then when someone has these life-changing injuries, it's like all of a sudden, the rehab world then becomes like, no, you, you need to do this, right? It's kind of like that hammer that gets brought down. And then all their independence and sense of control is then potentially lost. And then you get into that insurance piece where, you know, these patients could benefit from maybe supportive counseling, but the insurance won't cover it, like if they're on Medicaid or such. Or there's this stigma where they don't want it because it shows some type of weakness when it goes hand in hand with what they're going through. So I just find it interesting how much like we just don't necessarily follow recommendations that like from medical professionals that we interact with. But then it's like, no, you must follow it. So.
How much of that do you think is like, we take on? like, we take on the responsibility of the progress? And then we feel like progress is a, a personal reflection of us?
I'll, I'll say, yeah. I mean, especially when I first started therapy, I was like, I, I went in gung ho, like putting my all into everyone and thinking, yeah, I'll figure, I have to figure out a way to fix whatever problem, whatever, you know, with every single person. And it just, it's not feasible. And I find actually that doing a more education and doing more just relationship building and then just working on them together, more collaborative, talking through everything. You go way further than like pushing, 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 pushing. And that was through personal experience. It just, it just doesn't work, you know? Like someone's not going to walk faster if they just can't walk faster, you know? So then you gotta figure something else out with them.
Um, Claire?
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, I just, I agree with what you're saying, Nathan. But then what I struggle with from a clinician standpoint is then I'm not meeting my goals. If I'm, if I'm focusing on that report building, it's hard for me to, I can show it in my documentation, but then I'm not, you know, I'm getting pushed back because I'm not addressing the goal per se. And so I've actually shifted my philosophy in goal writing to be more education-driven, to, you know, to kind of reflect that report building too.
Yeah, I think that's great. I mean, it just, it, you know, like we talked about earlier, compliance. Like you can spend, even if you spend the first three sessions, you work with someone, just getting them a warm blanket and getting them some water and, you know, helping them get lined up with a shower with the CNAs or something. It's like, then every time after that, it's not going to be a struggle to work with them, you know? And it, it goes a long way. And yeah, it's hard to, with, with goal writing, I don't do much of it as an assistant. But you can see it that like, it, it's hard to add in what a person truly needs. You know, if a person only really needs to walk 20 feet in their house to get to and from the bathroom or to and from the kitchen, you know, it, it never gets reflected in a goal that's written. But that's, that's what it should be. It shouldn't be about their gate speed test. It shouldn't be about their balance test. It, it should be about what is functionally going to get them in their house and keep them there.
Um, along with that, I mean, that touches on two things that I want to talk about. One is health literacy. And this idea that like we can pull people all we want to do therapy and meet these goals. But if they don't, like if, if I don't understand as a patient, what's actually going on with my body and have like a true understanding of the complexity of it, which takes a lot of time. And I think it's a great goal to have is to improve somebody's health literacy and somebody's understanding of their condition. Because you can't even really meet the goals unless that understanding is there. And the other thought, and this is a good segue. I'm going to go back into sharing my screen because I want to bring up a different medical model to talk about and ask if you guys use this? If you're trying to shift towards it? If you have any ideas about how we as rehab professionals can do this? Because I think if there's going to be change and if we're going to see a shift, a true shift over time within this medical model. And if we're gonna challenge the status quo right now, which is, you know, big for-profit corporations coming in and kind of defining our jobs for us. Like we all kind of have to stand together across all three disciplines and decide like, what is our bottom line? How, how do we define success within our careers and with our patients? And how is that different than what exists now? And how can we merge the two or come to some kind of agreement? Because I don't think that things can necessarily stay the way they are. So I'm going to share this again. And so we've talked about the traditional medical model. And I've heard lots of different phrases for this. So if somebody has like the phrase that I'm supposed to be using, let me know. But I've heard it as the social model, the empowerment model, the recovery model. And the difference is that the central focus is on the person. So it's not necessarily on the diagnosis. We understand that the diagnosis is part of the picture. But really the focus is on the person, their personal goals, their beliefs, their experiences. You know, their fears, their concerns, their dreams, all of that. And then the treatment goals center around their wellbeing, their own life goals, their meaningful activity, their roles and their purpose. And those goals look very, very, very different than any kind of goal that's centered on eliminating or reducing the severity of the condition. And then we measure success by, is the person able to live a life that is meaningful to them? So this gets back to the conversation about goals and trying to show progress in goals. And I think with the traditional model, it's very straightforward. It's very, very black and white. We have, you know, thousands of tests we can use to show progress with a number. But the empowerment model is a lot more difficult because we're looking at quality of life and we're looking at a lot of gray areas as far as like what the person is perceiving within their own mind and soul and spirit. Like, are they living a life that is meaningful? And how do we measure that? So I'm going to open it up to thoughts about this empowerment model and what you think about it.
Yes, so I think it's a great model. But unfortunately, the criteria of what's around it is that institution is not going to shift very fast. So I think the assist really needs to lie in the qualifier. So I'm talking about more the assessments and the types of assessments that we use to demonstrate the disability of the patient. So I tend to shift when I can, my assessment materials towards things that are feedback from the patients. So like the voice handicap index, how much is that disability impacting their life? So that when I'm looking to justify my services, I have quantifiable data. Cause let's say they're an eight out of 10 or something like that. But they're really more of a reflection of the patient's issues rather than the diagnosis itself. And I think as, as clinicians, I know we're super busy, but at one point we're going to have to put our heads together and start creating assessments that are more functional to meet these models in a way where we can kind of have a little bit of balance. And in light of that, you know, as, as this patient, our fictional one is looking to leave, the hammer will come down and insurance will say no at one point when we plateau. So we have to figure out how to do those towards that discharge with the patient. And when I'm writing those goals, I'm really keeping in mind those questionnaires they filled out and what's important to them. And then giving them strategies to work towards that if we're not going to be, you know, making those disabilities decrease significantly.
What do you think would happen or would there be any effect? If clinicians around the world like started using patient-centered evaluation methods and quality of life measures? Like, do you think that that would shift anything? Cause it just, it feels like the, there's a level of autocracy that's deciding. Like, okay, we're going to use the slums now. Like everybody gets the slums, even though like who made that decision and why? And like, what in the world are we getting out of that? And then we as therapists go along with it because we're doing our jobs. But do you think there's any kind of grassroots change that could happen if everybody were to start documenting differently, measuring differently? You know, still using these standardized assessments, but also making space for these other types of assessments and valuations? Yeah.
Um, I think part of the thing that we can do as clinicians is especially if we are supervising incoming clinicians, is to really show them other ways, right? Cause also in school, we're really like, this is the assessment for this. This was written in 1973, before we had big insurance companies. This was written in 1948. There's a revision that was done in 1978. You know, so a lot of our assessments didn't have these binds on them and from the insurance companies. They really were looking at the impairments. So I think one of the things we can do to shift through, towards that grassrootsy kind of movement is to help our incoming clinicians have other options also. Because if they don't know about it, then, then they wouldn't be able to use it. And really keeping up with research, like recently my whole schooling of articulation was shifted because I had that old chart of speech sound development from three to about nine. And that's out the window as of 2018, because now everything is supposed to be in by five, based on cross-linguistic of like 32 languages or something like that. Study that they released in ASHA that fully backs. So I think we need to look for those really great studies that come out and support those studies and submit them to ASHA. So they can then propagate them as well and say, look, there's a change. There's a shift on how we treat or what, what benefits of treatments are best. Cause they'll take our assessments and treatments and things. And they'll try them on people and they go, these are the results. And then like a thousand people read them and it goes away. But I think if we, we do the work too and really help with finding the stuff that in our line of work, we feel works, to really help push those studies to get them into more mainstream action, would be why my choice of path to get that going.
I think my biggest, my biggest concern with that, not concern because I fully agree that we should adopt this model. I think it's the right move. But how do we deal with productivity standards? That seem to be growing by the day. I mean, the last job that, the last traditional job that I was in, I worked at a 95% productivity standard.
Okay, what is happening with this?
I'm not gonna give.
Wasn't it supposed to go away with?
You know what I'm saying? I, I, because they can get away with it, they do, right? And they're going to have un, well-intended, unknowing new. I was surrounded by people that were just at a school, shocker, right? First time being a clinician, I'll do anything you say. This is, I guess, what it's like out there, right? So, and then they become indoctrinated over time and that's their standard, right? So I think, I think it's going to have to come down to how can we sell this to big industry, whether it's whoever, in a way that shows them that they're not going to lose money? Cause I think it's sadly, as much as we want, it all comes down to money. It all comes down to profits because those are the people that are controlling the dial. So that model equals spending more time with patients, which is what that we should be doing, in my opinion, is we should be spending more time with patients across the board. But that inherently means that these folks are going to be losing money because you're going to be less productive per their standards. You're going to see less patients in a day. You're going to be using less resources and materials and all of that. So, and in theory, you might need to have better trained clinicians. If you're going to be spending more time and you're going to need to be abreast of the research, you're going to need to be knowing what you're doing. If you're spending 45 to an hour with a patient versus 14 minutes, this is what I was allowed to spend with my last, you know, person who just had a stroke. I get 14 minutes, I mean, come on now. So, you know, I think it's, it's such a complicated question you ask. And I, I love to think about it simply, but I do think it's going to take a lot of different pieces. I think it is, we need new assessments, bingo. I mean, come, if, if I get, if I see another Mocha or slums, I'm going to lose my mind, right? What are we doing here? Um, I, I mean, I can get a little bit of objective data, but do I really know about this patient? So I think new assessments, new screening tools. Cause I don't think the tests need to be this one, you know, law, even 30 minutes. They don't need to be so long, especially in acute settings. But they need to be more functional-based, especially in speech. Uh, so I think assessments are important. I think having some sort of conduit, getting research to clinicians who are too freaking busy to be doing this on their own. I'm sorry, we're too busy. I, I would, I, I have so many saved starred articles in my inbox. Just, just the list is growing. You can only get to so much in a week. And we're all, you know, living our busy lives. We have families, we have, you know, other extracurricular things going on. So I, more support, different assessments and a recognition from industry that this is important, right? We can see the impact. And I think the long-term, they would see that financial impact. But we want to see the impact within a week, right? We want to see that profit in a very short window. And these are long-term gains, right? We're going to see this profit happen over time by spending more time with patients. So, you know, I, I have hope because I see a lot more of this kind of conversation happening behind closed doors in, in the circles that I work in. So I know that people are craving this and they want this and they see this as a problem. It's just getting the buy-in from the people who have, have the control, have the wheel.
Heck, yeah. Yeah, if I start to think about it too hard, I'm just like, this is too big of a, it's like, is it ever going to get better? Because it feels so out of control. And it feels like it's all just a part of this lobbying, politics, CMS craziness that like none of us have any control over. But then I also know, like, if we don't start these conversations and like start somehow advocating collectively. And I think it has to come, like I said, from all three disciplines standing together, then nothing for sure is going to change. And you both brought up a point that I think is super valid. And that is one that I've thought about is like these, the assessments that are available. You know, have risen to popularity for whatever reason. But when you find like a quality of life measure or some kind of patient-centered measure, usually it's coming from a research, a clinical research group. And it's hard to track down where that PDF is. It's hard to like get instructions all the time. It's hard to know how it's been nor, like, none of that's super accessible because it's locked within that peer review journal system. Sorry, you guys, I have two dogs that are itching to play with me this whole hour. So sorry for the distraction. But the reality is like, we don't have clear, clean access to patient-centered evaluations. And so like, how can we even start this conversation if we don't have any place to start there? So then it almost makes me wonder if we need, is there like a coalition of research clinicians who are willing to start like a single accessible space where clinicians can access these things? I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's, it seems big, but it would, could be multifaceted. You know, we could go to local universities. I mean, there's a speech and physical therapy here at the University of Montana, Missoula. You know, you could talk to professors and try to, because they know more of the research side. They know more of that, that side. You can get like tangible results that, that you can use to, to back up what we all know to be true. And then that could translate into, you know, it wouldn't be a, there's no quick, easy fix. It'd be a long road to fix all this stuff. But, you know, there's, there's short steps to get there. And, um, yeah, I, I, and I think Megan's right that it does take organization. And it's, it's not, I don't think it's bigger than anyone. It just is a lot of work because you're, you're working against people just trying to make money. And that's all they see and they don't care about the human side of it. They just see numbers, but you know, there, there are ways to lobby and educate. And I, yeah, I think there's a lot of ways to do it, but it's not easy. And it's not, not a quick fix.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think it's like a, doing it for the next generation cause.
Yeah.
I think that also talks to, at least in speech, sometimes there's a disconnect between academia and like those who are in the clinical realm. I'm lucky enough to work at a rehab hospital that has researchers and clinicians. So I feel like I'm in a, in a good place where I have access. But I'm thinking when. But I'm thinking when I was in a nursing home in, you know, rural Illinois, getting that information on my own and on my own time, like, there's just so much out there, right? So how do I even compile all of that? Um, and even just thinking across, you know, the United States, the way people do evaluations. Um, if you looked at one evaluation for your TBI and then looked at another evaluation, no two evaluations are gonna look alike. So if we're trying to add these more quality type of assessments, A, finding the time and then B, finding, you know, do we have one standard message, measure and then a quality measure? I don't know. I think that's, that's where we have to chat with ASHA to get them to advocate and such too, so.
Yeah, for sure. I'm just, I'm just in my mind picturing a coalition that is like doing this work for clinicians and then clinicians can be a part of that, you know what I mean? Like, there can, there could be some sort of collective mission statement where, you know, there's no obligation if you're a part of this coalition or whatever. But there's the research is there for you and there's like guidelines that clinicians can use. So like, for example, let's say that it's decided, for whatever reason, that maybe the slums is not the most person-centered cognitive, quick evaluation. And maybe this coalition puts the effort into figuring out what is and what is reasonable in evidence-based and person-centered. And then provides that guideline. And then clinicians around the world can decide to align themselves with this. And it's, it's, it kind of gives people like a weight. You can go to their boss and be and be like, hey, I'm part of this, part of this coalition of SLPs, OTs, PTs, COTAs, PTA's, SLPA's. And this is what our values are and there's all this research behind it and this is the evidence base and I'm not gonna be using the slums anymore. I would like to make the case to use this. And then if if there's this energy behind it and this name and, you know, like this collective sort of understanding of like, we're here to help um, clinicians uh, shift away from this traditional medical model towards the empowerment model while also existing within the framework that we have to exist in. I'm totally gonna check out this link, Abby. What is it?
So, um, yeah, so it's at the Shirley Ryan Ability Lab. They have an outcome measures site and you can separate it by like patient-reported and it's interdisciplinary. Um, of, I'm not sure how many like quality of life or those types of assessments are included there. But um, I know it's like vetted and has a lot of detail um, in it, so something to look at.
Yeah, and that's, that's where you work, right?
Yeah, I work at the Shirley Ryan Ability Lab.
I think if there's anything that is like a beacon or anything to look at as an example of what we could, what we could be doing, it's the Shirley Ryan and if they do lab. Okay. Any other big thoughts on changing the world, shifting towards the empowerment model? Let's get Brian home. That's in the chat box. Um, so what do you think? If we if we were, if, let's say we live in a magical world where the whole healthcare system has shifted toward the empowerment model and the insurance company is on board with us. And they are all about patient-centered care and they understand that sometimes patients aren't at a point in their lives where they're ready to completely commit to therapy. How do we approach the conversation with Brian?
So I think my concerns would be really his um, prospect of being home with small children. So we really have to look at the safety issues and his ability to really um, appreciate the possible danger of that. And I think that's gonna hinge a lot on how he goes home and what his responsibilities are at home. And whether he is a sole person there or if there's someone assisting with those day-to-day activities. Um, depending on on the age of children, obviously. And then having been a programmer myself, um, having poor short-term memory and um, other cognitive impairments can be really detrimental to being able to um, do the job correctly. And not only in just writing code, but you impact other people's code and you impact systems. So there can be a lot of trickle-down problems that could occur from that. So there might need to be some sort of other rehabilitation towards different job or a different um, area in the work that he's doing. Um, until he is more confident in his skills or until we see that that sort of semi-platto in performance and short-term memory, working memory and then executive function, really. So I would look for sort of immediate fixes. And then I would look for um, a lot of compensatory strategies and see what that insurance company would be able to provide in terms of um, home healthcare.
I think my first inclination was to to get a read on the wife and her uh, mental state, her emotional state.
She's a wreck.
Ri- ri- right, I can imagine. Every once in a while, you see one of those that's really put together and you're like, wow. Because, you know, going home and recovering versus staying in the hospital and recovering, what is real, what are we really going to be offering him in the hospital that is far superior than what he's getting at home? And generally speaking, people in their home environment, they have a better quality of life. Um, they have more access to tools to help manage stress, to um, improve their happiness, to you know, other family members, et cetera, et cetera. So with the right support services in place and with an understanding that he can or cannot be alone with the kids based on the team's assessment, I would be much more inclined to send him home, even from a nutritional standpoint, just because you know, all of the new research around TBI is looking at how important nourishment and hydration and sleep quality are in that acute window. And those are like the top three things that are really hard to achieve in a hospital setting, right? So we're over-stimulating them, lousy sleep, lousy food, generally dehydrated, because we're leaving them to their vices unless a wonderful person like Nathan walks in and offers them a warm blanket and a glass of water. So I'm always inclined to steer on sending them home a little bit early, because I think they're gonna be accessing some of those brain healing things that they won't be able to get in the hospital that I think will make a bigger impact. That said, we don't want them to put someone else in danger or, you know, it depends on how you know, really what is his safety awareness and executive function? How severe is it? Maybe he's not working yet and that's A, okay, maybe he's offering some support um, at his office. That's not directly programming, but maybe it's just sort of managing files and and doing some customer service work with clients or something like that. I'm making this up. I'm not a programmer. You know, I'm always, how can we get them to the point where they sense purpose? That's so huge with our, and I mean, you can apply this to anybody post-stroke, you know? You have to give them a sense of purpose, like, and a sense of control over something. So if you can identify, what can we have them do to spend their time on that's meaningful? What are the boundaries and parameters around driving and kids? And then, you know, s- send them home. To me, you know, I I would be more inclined to send them home.
Um, yeah, I agree with what you guys are saying. I'll ju- I'll just add on that. As far as the initial, you know, with Brian and if if it really is unsafe for him to be home with his kids, trying to, trying to give him tangible things to look for, forward to, you know? An outing with his family, a trial at home. You know, these tangible things that he can say, like, in two days, I'm gonna go home and spend eat dinner with my family, but come back. You know, how does that go? And you can talk about that. And then beyond that, you know, when he does go home, make sure that you educate the family that they have an out. You know, if it's really not working, if he's really not safe, you need to give the family an out to say, hey, put a, you know, contact your, his primary care doctor, get him back in the system, because we need to figure something else out. Just because it it puts other people too much at risk. You know, he has a right to fail, but he he doesn't have a right to impact other people in a negative way, especially his, his children, so.
Yeah, so that insight's gonna impact him overall, right? And so definitely utilizing metacognitive strategies so that he's leading it, not necessarily us, like, okay, what is the goal? How are you getting through all of this? Um, also from the return to like driving and work, I always try to just be very, you know, like upfront with them. Like, I know you feel like you can go back to work right now. What if you can't do your job? What could happen? Or even, you know, from the return to driving, technically, at least in Illinois, if you've had a brain injury, you're supposed to notify the Secretary of State. So you technically aren't allowed to get behind a a wheel until your doctor clears you. Um, and so I was just kind of trying to navigate it that way in a very loving way. But those are hard conversations, right? If his insight isn't gonna improve, then unfortunately, that's gonna be the thing that's gonna stop him and we can only try to support him as much as we can. Um, and from the additional nine weeks before going home, I would say trying to identify different ways. You know, it depends if he's in near a city or if he is rural, you know, what what types of services does that look like? If he's more rural, then yeah, maybe home health would be the best option. But if he lives more like in a city area, he's likely not gonna qualify for home health, because he's not homebound. So he would have to go to outpatient and see if there are, um, you know, places that he can go, where he can go three times a week for hopefully in the same facility to get multiple disciplines. That's a whole other access issue, so.
Yeah, for sure. And I always think about too, like, we have this pool of money, like, there's resources available for all of these services and everything that's going on. And yet the, our model of treating brain injury really hasn't changed or evolved that much over time. And so maybe, you know, in the future, we can, as a medical institution, talk about what it would look like to put some of those funds towards like, yes, maybe he could go home, but there would need to be support for his family. And like, could we justify that? And if the goal is within the context of this empowerment model and it's all about quality of life, then the way that we're gonna get to that goal is by putting part of that pool of money towards helping the family. And but that's just like a totally different way and it doesn't fit right now into the construct of the medical model that we all live in right now. So we're, the three minutes passed, so I wanna respect everybody's time and wrap this up. And I just wanna say thank you so much for being here and for participating in the conversation. I have loved it. This is something I'm extremely passionate about. Like I said, I don't think that things can necessarily continue the way like on the trajectory that we're on. Um, and I'm very passionate about saving all three of these fields and making it um, a career that continues to be something that people want to go into and that they find a lot of joy in meeting in. Um, and I do think it's a gift that we can give to the next generation and we just need to keep having these conversations. So please, keep joining me. Um, I'm hoping that these sparks and discussions, you know, outside of this room tonight, um, and that people can watch this recorded video. And the next case study session that we're gonna be doing will be about a woman named Helen and it'll be about being, you know, diagnosed with dyspasia and being put on a softer diet texture with thickened liquids. But she doesn't want that, so we're gonna dive into that a little bit with kind of the same threads here of the the medical models and the systems that we're all working in and kind of the vision that we would all like to see us expand into, into the future. So with that, thank you so much. I'm gonna wrap it up. You'll all get a link to the recorded version. And yeah, hope you can join us for the next one. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan and Nathan. This is great.